Yeah. Means there's gonna be one nice.
Delicia let me know just a few minutes ago that she was not gonna be president. Delicia Brooks and Jerry.
Okay.
Actually, that's three. It'll be, yeah, we have to have two-thirds, so it'd have to be everybody. Yep. It's two-thirds. Two-thirds of.
The ones here, though.
No, it's of the entire commission.
True.
Yes. In order to change the bylaws, it has to be at the full commission.
Or change the bylaws?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, that's. Uh, I thought you meant for like the things that are coming up.
No, that just has to have six positive votes. No matter what. Okay.
I didn't even have any take on what. I know, I'm telling you.
Thank you, Sherman. I'm gonna go with. Thank you, Sherman.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it has to be Sherman.
He did say he started getting some calls about the conditional, I'm not sure, conditions, the, uh, border zone adjustment requests. The border zone adjustment request. D1 storybook, storybook.
I wouldn't agree with that. Yeah. I can imagine how those people.
I'm doing it. Opening it's not much, just those.
A little slower.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank everybody for coming to the November, uh, meeting of the Conway Planning Commission. The Conway Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on public-carrying items. The City Council will make a final decision on these items using the Planning Commission recommendation as a guide. Items reviewed at tonight's Planning Commission meeting may be considered by the City Council as early as November 27, 2018. Items not approved by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council within 30 days after Planning Commission denial. If an item is appealed to the City Council, a public notice sign will be placed on the property at least seven days prior to the City Council meeting, and a public notice will be placed on the city's website at www.cityofconway.org. Decisions made by the Planning Commission acting as the Board of Zoning Adjustments are final. No appeal may be made to the City Council. Any aggrieved party may pursue litigation should they feel the decision is unfair. Good evening, Commissioners. First up on the item of agenda is the approval of the minutes for the October 15, 2018 meeting. Has everyone had a time or had time to review? Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Brian, and the second came from Wendy.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? It carries. All right. The next item on the agenda is the subdivision committee. We met previously today at 6:30 to review the Lewis Ranch face two lot four, lot four replat. We voted unanimously, um, on the one item from the punch list that required active approval, which was to allow lots four C, E, and F, um, to, uh, approve the 27-foot private street with a public access event from South Amity Road to Crane Drive. That was approved unanimously. Now on to the public portion of our hearing. The first request is for the zoning variance for reduced lot width at 143 Oliver Street for Story Brook renovations. For public item request, the first person that speaks in favor of the request will have 10 minutes. Each additional person that wants to speak in favor of the request will have an additional two minutes each. The same goes for opposition. The first person that would like to speak in opposition of the topic will have 10 minutes, and each additional person that would like to speak against the topic will have an additional two minutes. When you come to the mic, please state your name and your address for the record, and then you may begin. So do we have someone here to speak for 143 Oliver Street?
Good evening, Rory Thompson and Nikki Thompson, Storybook Homes. Uh, we just want to, for you guys, to consider a lot split on this property. It's got really some excess property. Uh, we're looking at a, the house is really rundown right now. We're looking at a total renovation of that property, and then we'd like to build a single-family house next to it. Um, real upscale, nice property. My wife could talk more about the design, but we just want to be able to put another lot in there to kind of fill in that extra property. I think the overall width right now is 50 feet, but we're looking for 45 feet. The parking will be on the back, as, uh, Brian kind of mentioned to us. Um, so that's really what we want to do. We're asking for a variance tonight to be able to build a nice, upscale, single-family house on that property.
So how are you gonna exit? How's the, the driveway gonna come in? Where's it gonna come in?
It's mostly gonna be towards the, uh, Brian and I looked at that, uh, or maybe with Scott at his office. We're gonna put the driveway to the, I guess it's the south side, and then the parking will be to the rear of the house.
Will they drive in between the two houses, I guess, to get back there?
No, it's gonna be, we're looking at the, the drive to be all the way to the south of the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the request? Seeing as there is none, is there any opposition to the request? The first person that speaks in opposition will get 10 minutes. Each additional person will get two minutes.
I guess you can hear me. I'm Robert Bryant. I live almost right across from it.
At what address?
Uh, 136 Oliver Street.
Thank you.
I've lived in this neighborhood for, uh, 68 years. I'm 72 now. I lived in the house behind it, one house, not the house directly behind it on Garvin, but the next one from about, uh, four years old, so I was eight. My father built a house, this house at 136, uh, when I was in the second grade, we moved there. When I got married, they moved out, and I stayed there. So I've been there for like 68 years.
Wow.
And, uh, it's always been a real nice neighborhood until about 12, well, it's still a nice neighborhood. Uh, about 12 years ago, 13, uh, they allowed a apartment complex right across from us, and they promised us the world, and, uh, noise level has gone up tremendous. Uh, traffic has been going up tremendous. I know my property value, I don't think, has gone up because of that. Uh, I've watched other places. I've heard that this house, they can't be, or they can or can't be turned into duplexes. I'm not, I, I worry about them, about the houses when they're sold, somebody coming in, and then putting, uh, turn them into duplexes like they're doing all around. They did on, uh, Robbins and, uh, uh, Conway Boulevard after they put in that, uh, complex there, and now they've, all they've got is, uh, co, uh, duplexes there. Uh, this, like I say, we've got enough, we've got quite a bit of traffic there anyway, and like I say, the noise level, we have the, they have parties over at that complex. It'll be, the place will be completely full, and there'll be like 15 cars parked in front of my house and down to the street and everything, and people will be drunk, laying out in the road, throwing up in my yard, and I've had them urinating in my yard, and the last party out there, they turned two cars around right directly in front of my house, and had three old girls out there dancing and hunching each other. And then they got to hunching automobiles, and then they laid down on the asphalt and got to hunching asphalt, and the cops showed up then, 'cause I'd called them. At 3 o'clock, you know, the party needs to be over. They don't start till 11:30. We're just worried about, like I say, noise level, the, uh, traffic on the street, which is just like a circus now, and, uh, property values and stuff like that. And like I say, it's, uh, we were kind of excited when we found out there's, they bought that, gonna gut that old house and fix it up, be a nice place, you know, for a family, but then you put that other one in, and, uh, again, I don't know down the road if they won't, can or won't turn that into, would just turn into another apartment complex almost and all, and, uh, we'd just like to kind of keep it a neighborhood, uh, thing. You know, they stated there's three houses over there that lots that are like small lots, kind of catty-corner on Oliver Street over there. I think those houses were built in the late 40s, and, uh, there's a trailer over there. I know there's a trailer on that lot when I was in junior high school, and it burnt, and they let them come back and put another one in there. And I thought that zoning boards and everything was to kind of get away from that, where we wouldn't have houses all crunched in and more people and everything. So that was my complaint, or if you call it complaint, I'm worried about the, again, more people, the noise, traffic, and property value, you know? So that's why we were just really not hot again, hot for in there.
Sure.
So that's why we were asking maybe not to have that done, the second house put in there.
Okay.
Or the one house put in there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak in opposition?
This isn't fun for me. So bear with me, I'm a little nervous.
No worries.
But anyway, I spoke before, a couple of times before the commission, before, kind of similar things, similar concerns like Robert has.
Can you?
My name is Sharon Walter. I live on 116 Oliver Street, so I'm.
Thank you.
Same block across the street, and, uh, concerns that contribute to some of this is what we've experienced with this housing across from us, the noise, the traffic, the parties. I have syringes in my front yard, beer cans, trash. It's gotten a little better, but anyways, so all those kind of things come up when we think there's gonna be something else put in there, 'cause this is a off, this happens often. And when I mention it to people about a hearing, it's like, oh, no, what is it this time? Like Robert said, we're happy somebody bought that house and is gonna fix it up, and I believe they will do a good job at that. My concern is that narrow lot, and I know there are some diagonal from that that are narrow, and like Robert said, those were built long before we were historic district and, uh, historic in the making, I guess, but anyway, um, and I guess the report, um, that was put out said that that's common, common in that area to have small lots, but I don't see it. I grew up in this area like Robert. My mom and dad own the house I lived in. My grandfather's built it, and, um, went to school, walked the neighborhoods for 12 years to school, and trick-or-treated, sold raffle tickets, you know? Uh, but anyway, so I know the neighborhood well, and I know the character of it, and when I moved away, and after my parents passed, I wanted to move back. I want, I love the large yards, the mature trees. I wanted a place for a large garden, which I expanded on. So anyway, that's real attractive, and with this narrow lot, again, it's not 50 feet, which is required, it's 45, and I'm having a hard time visualizing it. A driveway has to go, I guess, enter from Oliver to the back.
Sorry, time's up.
Okay. So anyway, those concerns, and, um, I encourage other people to, if they couldn't make it to call, so hopefully you receive some other input too. Anyway, thank you, and we're happy somebody's renovating, but the concerns are the crowding.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's David Antonio. My wife and I, Kathy Antonio, we live at 1423 Garvin Street. That's the house, I believe, that Robert, we were up in, that he alluded to earlier. Uh, we, we really don't have any problem. I'm glad they're renovating, and never met them, but we did tonight, and the pictures look great, and what they're gonna do with WT's old house or whatever. Uh, it's, it's single-family dwelling, like the family moved in there, and I know you can't control that. That'd be great, I have any problem with that. It's the renting situation, like Robert alluded to, come and go, you know, college units back and forth, and single-family, a family with one or two cars, but you've got four or five people. As a homeowner, our concern is for our neighborhood. Adding another house on a narrow lot only crowds our neighborhood, and just because you've got some narrow lots already, isn't a good reason to add another one if it's a problem, if narrow lots are a problem. We have one right next door to us, and, uh, people are always gonna have company. We have a young lady that lives next, she's great, and, but it's a narrow, very narrow lot, one car. If she has company, well, they, I can get two, but if you have, you know, everybody has company, and they've got to park somewhere, so there's gonna be an overflow someplace, and that, I don't know where it will go there. Maybe out onto Oliver, and there's no room to park there. Anyway, as homeowners, uh, if the houses are rented, we have to deal with, uh, deal with that, and, uh, and the problems they cause because it's only a temporary house for them. Anyway, there's hardly any room on Oliver to park. Parking in the back will affect us and our neighbors on Garvin Street, headlights slamming doors, I mean, we're just, uh, west of them, so there's a driveway there. The headlights are gonna come right into our backyard. Anyway, there are children who walk in, play, you know, and go to school and play in the neighborhood. Even on this property, you have sidewalks, and I know that's a problem with Conway everywhere. The rest of the neighborhood doesn't, and the children and pets are in the streets. Like to see sidewalks everywhere, but I'm glad that they're gonna put them there. Anyway, there, well, I guess that's about it, because I've already alluded to the fact that if you, just because there's narrow lots everywhere, and if they are, can be problems like the one beside us, uh, that's not a good reason to add another one. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Come back up. Yeah. Sure.
Just let you know, Karen Rainey at 112 Conway Boulevard, and Jeff Locke, and Charles Locke with rental property 208 Oliver Street, they just phoned in their opposition, so let you know.
I just wanted to say, just kind of clarification for, for the neighbors, 'cause obviously we, we strive to, to really do, do well by our neighbors, and we want everybody to be happy. Right now, the, 'cause it's, all of their concerns are basically, right now, it's, it's the lot is zoned for duplex. So if we don't do anything, which is bad as this neighborhood is over here, I'm beginning to wonder if we should. The last house we sold, we sold for 160 bucks a foot just down the street on Oliver. Uh, we've not had any complaints by anybody. We're talking about putting a single-family house where one is basically falling in right now, and next to it, putting a nice, really good house. Right now, we could just go in there and turn this thing into a duplex. So I, I just want to kind of clear the air a little bit. The house right now is zoned for duplex. I could just convert it into a duplex as it stands.
Absolutely.
That's not what I want to do, but I just want the neighbors to understand kind of what the zoning is right now.
All right. I'm gonna bring this into commission. Commissioners, what say you? So to read the suggested variance and conditions, number one is the 50-foot lot width as required in an R2A zoning district is reduced five feet, allowing the splitting of the existing property. Number two is parking must be at the rear or on the concrete driveway of the new residents occupying the 45-foot wide lot. No parking is allowed in the front yard. Those are the two conditions you refer.
Yeah, I was worried about the noise and, and that whole, if they're gonna, if they're gonna put enough houses on it, like, chances are you're gonna have some pretty good shit. If they don't buy it, they're gonna, it's gonna be pretty basic, and. I'm telling you, um, but I think that. I don't like that little bitty lot, that if noise and that kind of stuff is the only issue, I don't necessarily see it as a problem with what they're claiming.
I think a single-family home would be better for the neighborhood than a duplex, because it's already zoned for a duplex, and that could happen, you'd have renters. Where if you make a single-family home that you're going to sell, I think it would better for that area.
I drove through there today, and, I mean, there's a lot of nicer, newer houses that have been renovated.
Right.
And it looks so much better, and there's a lot of places that need some TLC, and this is a prime example of one. And when you got, you know, these people gotta make money, or they're just gonna, like you say, tear it down and put in a duplex, which I don't think is as good. And, and you don't wanna, I don't know, you know, discourage people to invest in this, this type of neighborhood, 'cause there is a lot of rundown properties that, that could, you know, use some stuff like this. I, I think it, I think when it's all said and done, if we approve this, it's gonna be a lot better for this whole area, and you're gonna see a lot more of this coming in, where you, y'all could go and buy several other properties and, and do the same thing. So I have no problem with it. Noise and traffic, I mean, that's, that's an awesome problem for Conway to have, you know? Growth. Uh, you know, people throwing up in your yard, that's, that's a cop issue. That's not, that's not our responsibility. That lot is long enough to, to kind of justify it a little bit in my mind, 'cause it goes back pretty deep. So I don't have a problem with it. I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Brian and a second by Arthur. Any further discussion? Any further comments? I ask for a show of hands, all those in favor? All those opposed? Nay. It passes six to one. Thank you, guys. As a, as a reminder, since this was, uh, decided as the Board of Zoning Adjustment, all decisions are made final. Any appeals need to go through the judicial system. All right. Now for the rest of our agenda, next up is item D2, the request for conditional use permit to allow religious activities in I-3 at 655 Davor Drive, Suite 104. Is anyone here to speak in favor of the request?
I'm George Covington, Jr., 4699 Prince Street. We're wanting to put a church there. It's a commercial building. It's zoned I, which is what it's been for a long time. We have plenty of parking, and this would work good with what we currently have there, which is doctors' offices and offices, 'cause this will be nighttime on Wednesdays. So it would allow plenty of, uh, it wouldn't add to congestion or anything, because it would be off times of where the businesses are.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Covington?
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else to speak in favor of the request? Anyone to speak in opposition? All right, I'll bring it back into commission. Commissioners, what do you say?
Dave Ward's already got a bunch of churches. One more gonna hurt.
I think it's a good use, right? It's a, it's provoking a mixed use in this intensive industrial area. Uh, we've seen some multifamily that's gonna be happening back behind that, behind this property, so invigorating it with some other uses, I think, just helps to add to the, the livelihood of that space.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion. A motion by Brian, and a second by Wendy. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? All right. I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. No. Passes six to one.
You voted against that one, too?
I did.
Hi, my name's Justin. How are you?
I didn't see that one coming. Now some of them.
The rebel.
Sayer. He's our nice sayer.
All right. The next on the, up on the agenda is item, I did that right, D3, uh, request to rezone from R2A and O2 to S1. Conway Regional Health Foundation request, uh, located at Robinson, Western, Movenia, and Donaghy Avenue. Cal regional health foundation request located at Robinson, Western, La Vina, and Donaghy Avenues. Is there someone here to speak in favor of the request? Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Brian Gibbs. I live at 3930 Newcastle Drive. I'm representing Conway Regional Health Foundation in our request to rezone any of these properties. I believe there's nine parcels. This zoning request is consistent with other properties we've acquired over the last several years. I would be happy to answer any questions.
So what are you, are you putting in more parking, or you actually having some offices? What are you doing?
What initiated this is we're currently in design development for plans for a three-story, 42,000-square-foot medical office building adjacent to the main campus, which will displace parking. And we're also doing design development for additional parking to the north of the main campus across La Vina.
So those lots, 2230, 2218, 23, 23, you picture is being parked?
Correct.
And, and y'all would build on what is currently parked?
Correct. We would be building just to the east of the main campus, still on that main property, not into the neighborhood, not past, I believe that's Augusta.
Towards Augusta, okay.
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak in favor of the request? Is there anyone here tonight to speak in opposition? Okay, we're going a little faster than I expected. Bring it back into commission. Commissioners?
The hospital doesn't have much of a choice of a direction to go for growth, so, I mean, this, it makes very clear sense to build in the parking and displace it. I think it's a good use of land.
Let me ask the question. What, Brian, what does giving all of this, basically carte blanche to S1? We always ask for the worst-case scenario. What are we granting them as a worst-case scenario for them to do without seeing the full plans? Because right now, they're just saying, here are nine lots. Let's just move it all to S1 and get it over with.
I mean, the worst case is a hospital campus I can think of. I mean, S1 basically is institutional zoning, which means hospital, university could possibly go there. I guess they could sell out to UCA, and I don't know if that would really generate any more traffic. It's probably about the same as a, as a hospital campus, really. But, but yeah, I mean, they're, what they do is probably the worst-case scenario. I can't think of any more traffic generating land use than what they're doing right now, basically.
Are there any controls on which of these properties that we, that they are allowed to do the parking lot on, say, versus what they're allowed to do the multi-story medical complex?
S1 would allow parking as a principal use, basically, in support of the hospital, that type thing. So they could pick or choose where they wanna put structures or parking either way.
Okay.
It just doesn't make sense, like, what?
2116B?
It just doesn't make sense to put structures there at all.
609? I think that just doing that for future, because they own them.
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of like UCA. I think that whole area is gonna end up being hospitals one day anyway.
It's mansion of the campus.
Now, one thing that is in play is along Donaghy Avenue, at least halfway back to the block or Augusta, somewhere in that area, that's under the old Conway Design Overlay District. So the historic district commission will have to approve along Donaghy Avenue, any structures built along Donaghy, so...
Lot 609 would have to keep.
Like 609 would be a perfect example, and what the, and there's also the Donaghy Corridor Study, which hasn't been officially adopted, but I believe everybody's pretty well on board with it, and I believe the hospital's even pretty well on board with it. But it wants to see Donaghy transition to a more urban corridor, more downtown-ish, like, that kind of thing. And in the same, they're working together, basically. The old Conway regulations are gonna wanna see parking to the rear, at least to the side, a nice pedestrian, walkable environment, all that kind of thing. So if the hospital were to wanna build something on 609, they're gonna have to go through the old Conway, or the historic district commission, and meet old Conway design reviews. So there won't be a parking lot right out front. I don't, if something weird happens, that's not the way it's supposed to go down anyway, so...
Yeah, I mean, 216B and 2110...
And 609 even.
And 609 even. 609 bothers me less now that, sort of in the, the old historic district or old Conway overlay.
I believe the 2110 and at least half of 2116 are also gonna be in there, so... I know that the district goes at least halfway back to the block, if not all the way to Augusta.
What do you, what do you plan on, do you know which lots we're talking about? When we say 2116B and 2110 and that 609, what are your plans for that?
There's nothing, there's nothing currently.
Nothing, nothing planned there? You're not...
Nothing currently. We have a long-term campus plan that we would, I mean, which is probably 15, 20 years down the line. Just as, as the hospital grows, there's currently not any activity. There's no plan development. There's nothing at this point.
So these other lots are the ones you're planning on probably doing something in the...
716 Western, anything north of La Vina, south of Robinson, that little block there is where we're planning on putting parking. And that's the only thing that we're...
Yeah, so you don't have 2131 or 2119 planned either right now?
No, there's no, nothing to go in there. In order to support construction, we may remove a house for a laydown or construction parking during that, and then would be brought back up after the construction's done. But there's nothing planned to rebuild on those lots at all.
Gotcha.
And I do say that, there's no plans right now. There's a 20-year plan that, a lot of this is gonna have to be, because we're landlocked. We can't, we don't, can't go the other direction. But, like I say, there's a long-term plan, and as he said, with working with the city, we would meet all the requirements on the Donaghy Corridor. Well, the last house I purchased was from UCA, so they understand. I'm, I'm not going across college, and they're not coming across the other way, so...
That's funny.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
I mean, I still have, I mean, this commission has, have issue with it, because we typically have never just given carte blanche approval without a full, at least halfway thought-out plan of what the vision is, what they plan to do. It's a little bit different, because it is S1, it is a hospital. So I don't know, I'm torn.
So the 2131 and 2119 are the ones that you've got the biggest problem with?
Really, those two, four, five, those five on the right-hand side. The issue with the parking lot... Less of an issue now, but I still have, I mean, those are included in the, the eastern six, or the eastern five, sorry. Those are five lots. I have no issue with the parking lot, that it is congruent with exactly everything that is touching it. No issue.
So that building is gonna be built on the east side, which is right up against Augusta, which is where that parking is. So I don't have a problem with 2131 or 2119, because that would be the next logical place, closest to the building that's gonna be built for parking. I don't have a problem with those two. But if you wanted to, say, issue these, but leave out 2116, 2110, and 609, and I really don't have a problem with 609, because it's gonna have some more oversight with historical district. But if you wanna leave those two or those three out, I don't have a problem with it. But I think everything else makes perfect sense.
I think so.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna word that in motion.
You know, to these properties, it's, we probably can know that it's hospitals. Wherever they put there would be part of hospital campus.
For instance, let's play out this scenario. What if they decided, you know what, we wanna go parking lot crazy? And we wanna turn all of these nine parcels into parking. Now, he's talked about the overlay, so we do have some controls on the ones over here. And that gives me more hope and more confidence that the worst can't happen. But that is included in what can be done in the hospital. They'll pick you up anywhere. Little friendly guy, a little motorcycle, or a little go-kart pick you up anywhere. You can never talk that right. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
I'm gonna have a motion by Brandon, a second by Ray. Now, I'm assuming that you're just approving as-is?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Nay. Six to one, it carries.
Mr. Chairman, or Acting Chairman?
Yes.
Can we go back to the last one in, no, I'm sorry. On Oliver Street, did we, did we approve that with these conditions?
Yes, both conditions were approved in the motion. Both conditions were included in the recommendation. All right, next item on the agenda is D4, request to rezone from R1 and O2 to MF3 at 1235 East German Lane. Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
My name's Christopher Soller. I live at 1513 East German Lane. I'm Peggy Pax's listing agent over at her house. The reason why we think it should be zoned to multifamily is, you know, we've got Kevin Bodecker right over there with his duplexes right on the other side, and Mr. Pax. I got Mr. Pax's house over on 1225 as well, and Sam Mitchell, that owns Jim Smith Auto, went under contract with him on that. He's expressed interest in buying Peggy Pax's property to possibly put a cul-de-sac, to redevelop the area, brain duplexes out there. And his mom's thinking about living in the, in the other house, but there potentially at some point that that could be all the way tore down, and then build all the way across those three acres. Also, you know, over there at Ms. Louise Hoag's, right over there, over there on 1290, is owned MF3 already, and that area could really use some updating. I think it's time to, time for some of the older houses to be tore down over there and to build stuff like Kevin's got over there. And I did talk with him the other day, explained to him what our vision was, and he seemed to be on board with it. Do you all have any further questions?
So the sale is pending the rezoning?
Well, the sale's not pending the rezoning. He's, he's already, I say, he's already went under contract on 1225 with Mr. Pax. But for any of them, any of the developers, what we're looking for is a single investor that doesn't, that wants to come in and just build one-story duplexes is what we feel like would be in the best interest over there.
There's a plumbing shop?
That's correct. Mr. Jim Pax right back over here, it's his business. And so the plan would be, if Sam gets it, I believe he's gonna tear down all that right there. He may keep the White House for a little bit, but his ultimate plan is to build one-story apartments right through there.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak in favor of the request? Anybody to speak in opposition of the request? Okay, is that kind of a night? Bring it back into commission. What do we think? Why do you say that? Meaning the number of apartments allowed?
I'm sorry. I agree, there are some places out there that need to be torn down and started over, but...
You said he wanted to put in duplexes? Mr. Soller?
Correct.
You wouldn't need MF3 for duplexes, would you?
Well, to shoot the cul-de-sac, because we came for Ms. Lackey's, just, you know, about two months ago, we were over here on hers on 1295. And when we came for R2, something I didn't take into consideration when I first came here the first time is that there was gonna be six driveways coming off German. And so we're wanting to cut that down and just shoot the cul-de-sac right there and help traffic over there. But also, for it not to be anything crazy, no two- or three-story apartments. I don't see anything like it's done over there across, right, passing Nicole's place right there, where they have the big wide apartments. Would not wanna do anything like that. We just wanna put one-story apartments right there. They're just similar, very similar to what Kevin and Bobby did.
So MF2 would work for this, right, Brian? Would MF2 not work for what he's talking about?
That's what I was thinking.
It does...
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with MF2 as much as MF3. I'm kinda like Ann. I, I think that would work for what you're trying to do anyway.
If you built it out fully, it's got 106 units. If you took full advantage of MF3.
And that's not his plan at the current time. He's got a full... Well, I say, his plan would be to do something very similar, probably what Bobby and Kevin did over there. He owns, you know, Jim Smith Autos. He doesn't have time to manage a three-story apartment building over there, if that makes any sense.
Okay, so how many can you get on there if you do one story?
Well, you could put, they, they have 12 duplexes over there, so they've got 24 units with theirs right on there on the crossing on the green. And he might put a little bit more, but like I say, it's not gonna be anything crazy amount as they have over there with those big wide apartments or back down off of Keith Lee Drive. It's not gonna be anything to that nature.
Okay, then why are you not asking for MF2, I guess is my question.
Well, I wanted to leave it open for him if he wanted to go a little bit more, but I don't fully expect him to do that.
MF2 will allow for 32 units?
Forty-eight.
We'd be okay with that.
I mean, MF3, I have a hard time approving without a site plan and all that, and where we can put in stipulations and all that. I've got no problem with MF2 if you wanna...
That'd be fine with us. We'd like to make a recommendation in MF2.
Okay.
So why are we, why are we more okay with that without any duplexes, plans in front of us to, to review?
Well, that's still gonna go in front of, whenever they come back to Brian, they're still gonna have to do whatever fits in that lot size and all that. That's, I mean, they're gonna have to do sidewalks and all that stuff that they do through site review, so...
It'll all be part of the development review.
Yeah, development review. So I don't have a problem with that. It'll go through, and it'll have to look just like everything else in Conway.
Yeah.
With drainage, landscaping, ingress, egress?
Yeah, all that. They review all that. We don't have to do that.
It's practically surrounded by multifamily on three sides.
Yep.
You know, I think the only folks that might have concern are the residents on Choate back behind them.
Is that in Nepal, or is that...
Nicole Place is like to the west, I think.
Yeah, it's not Nicole Place, I don't know what's called.
I would be okay with MF2. To limit the number of units.
MF3 would just be too many for that area.
No, that's true. Fifty-three units?
Fifty-three.
That's not on this, not on this 1.79. He's including the, that and the next one.
D4 and D5 together.
Yeah, which I don't...
So would you need to say MF1 for this one and MF2 for that one, or are we considering both?
We can't go from Old Dam to Mercer.
Right.
Right.
Would you be agreeable to, to reduce this to MF1 on both of them?
I don't know if he's in char, is he in charge of the other one, too?
I mean, I'm just...
I'm representing them.
You're representing another family, too?
What, if one, would that be okay?
Are you representing another family, too?
I am.
Okay, all right.
With MF1 being 53, and you've got two considerations here, that's, that's 106.
This is my...
Thirty units on 580.
This is my concern, is we're being asked to approve a wide range between 53 and 106 units, and we have no plans in front of us.
Oh, we don't?
No, no plans. Same thing I had with the request before that, with the hospital, that really didn't have a plan. We typically, unless it is a well-thought-out, well-versed plan in front of us, we typically do not take favorable action.
Then I say we do MF1, and if they come back with some plans for, and wanna change it to MF2 later, and then... Then I say we do MF1, and if they come back with some plans for, and wanna change it to MF2 later, then, then fine, but. Well, here's my deal, is you got a plumbing place out there, we got multifamily all around there. Multifamily is proper use of this land.
Absolutely.
So, to just turn them down and make them spend a bunch of money on architectural drawings and stuff doesn't make sense to me.
Agreed.
I, I mean, once it's rezoned and whatever zoning we get, they can draw up some plans that fit that and know that they can go forward, and they haven't wasted a bunch of time and money. I, I'm making a motion to approve this MF1.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve at MF1. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay.
Well, I was curious, did, did you mention your clients willing to consider MF1?
Correct.
Okay.
That would, that would cut it for Sam Mitchell.
Okay.
And I represent him as well.
Okay.
So, I have a motion by Brian and a second by Brandon. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns?
And before they build out there, they do have to submit plans to
Right.
subdivision committee and things?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All right, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. So, that does not pass. That does not carry. The vote was five to two. Yep. Ray. Before we move off of this, I'll at least ask Ray. I'm not gonna ask myself a question. Ray. Are there any other considerations that would make you reconsider your vote?
MF1?
Yes.
There's already a fence over there between Ms. Lackey's and Ms. Peggy Pax's property. Just wanted to let you know that.
There's a what?
There's a fence that runs between their property. So, if somebody bought Ms. Lackey's and decided they wanted to live there, so to speak, they wouldn't be able to see over there on the other side.
Okay, so. So, in, so this property, you're gonna have the cul-de-sac, so there's one.
Correct, because when we were over here just a few months back on Ms. Lackey's, on R2, there's gonna be the six driveways off of German. And, you know, I live over there and I, the more I thought about it, it'd be better to have the cul-de-sac over there.
Yeah.
I would be fine with it with that condition that it is cul-de-sac.
We can't put conditions on the request, unfortunately.
Well, but when it comes back for.
Just give the numbers on this one, broke down this request and the other request.
Yes.
1.79 acres, 21, 21, 32, 21, 32.
Well, if you think about this, Ms., Ms. Ray, at MF1, you're really gonna have single investors looking at the property. Any developers like Jim Rakin, you know, Kevin, all them, they're gonna probably be asking for MF2, MF3.
Yep.
They may not, they may not. I'm just saying, they, they're, they're, the bigger, bigger developers here in Conway are gonna have to have more multifamily MF2 or MF3 on the property.
Okay, well, with what Brian just, Mr. Patrick just said, there'd be 21 units. I was thinking fifteen, three.
You were thinking.
That was with both.
Yes, so that, that changes my mind. Well.
I'm making a motion to approve MF1 and revote.
So, I have a motion by Brian. Do I have a second?
Second again, yes.
I have a second again by Brandon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Nay. It now passes six to one. Okay. Now, for the next request is D5, the request to rezone from R2 from MF3 at 1295 East German Lane. Go ahead. Take it away.
The thing that we wanna do on this one, and I say it's very similar to the last one, is I've thought about those six driveways a whole, whole lot. It's just a bad idea. It needs to be the cul-de-sac right there. And I agree, you know, as far as MF3, you know, I, I know that we need to come down on that till we have more plans. And if I bring somebody in there and they wanna go that, I'll bring it right back in front of you. But we would like to try to go ahead and push MF1 there. We really need that for single investors over there. And that also would, you know, would make it look a lot prettier. I say you've got a bunch of older houses right down through there. And, you know, it's time to, time to bring that to be a lot prettier area.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So, for two points. So, 32 and 21, is that what it was?
Yes, for a total of 53. On five acres, just shy.
I mean, it's the same thing.
Well, hold on. Before we, hang on, let's, we gotta still have to take public input, since it's a separate item. Anybody to speak, anybody additional to speak in favor of this request? Seeing as there is none, is there anyone to speak in opposition of this request? Seeing that there is none, now I'll bring it back into committee. Go for it. I have a motion. I have a motion by Ann Tucker to approve this request at MF1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brandon. Any other discussions, questions, or comments on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It carries unanimously.
What?
What?
What happened there?
Well, I'm not gonna approve one and I'll approve the other one.
Right.
I can't just say nay, come on now. I know. It was really close. All right, thank you, guys. All right, just a few more items on the agenda. Next up is item E1, which is the 2019 Planning Commissioner nomination and selection. I will tell you that we received 11 total nominations for the two available slots that will fall off, which is both Jerry and Wendy. We had a few of the applicants who withdrew their nominations due to time constraints as well as serving on additional boards. And then we had some that were not available to, to meet the interview timeline that was set out from November 1st until tonight for the interviews. At the end of the time, there were, there was a unanimous decision made by those that were present, which is a quorum of the remaining commission, to recommend forward from Ward 2, Brian Townsend, and from Ward 1, Letitia Sanders-Jones. The next step in that process will, these will be made public tomorrow and be released to the media. And then the city council will take it in our advisement for 14 days before their final meeting in December, which is yet to be determined on a date. Are there any questions? Brian Townsend from Ward 2. And then Letitia Sanders-Jones from Ward 1. Do we have to take an active vote on that or just an announcement? Okay. Would someone please make a motion?
Make a motion to approve those two nominations.
Okay. We have a motion by Brian and a second by Wendy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passed unanimously. All right. The next item on the agenda is item E2. I take it that each of you have received a copy of this in advance of tonight's meeting. To make sure that we're clear, I'll go ahead and read the request again for the public record. We're asking, and I say we, the chairman, Mr. Ryan, myself, are asking for us to review amendment to our bylaws as a commission. So, the procedure states that Bri, or Jerry and I would like to discuss an amendment to the Planning Commission bylaws concerning commissioners' attendance and conduct. Conway Planning Commission bylaws, Article 6 amendments, sorry, amendments state that bylaws may be amended by an affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the full membership of the commission. A proposed bylaw amendment must be placed on the agenda of a regular meeting for discussion at the following meeting, two-month process, or a written notice must be given to all commissioners at least 10 days prior to the meeting. With written notice, the proposed amendment may be reviewed at the next regular meeting. A letter stating the proposed bylaws amendment was mailed to all the Planning Commissioner members, Planning Commission members on November 2nd, 2018. The commission may consider an act on the proposed amendment at the November 19th Planning Commission meeting. Approval of the amendment will require seven positive votes. Justin, watch yourself. Proposed amendment is, current Planning Commission bylaws, Article 2A dot 3 states, "The chair on behalf of the commission may request the resignation of any member who has missed three successive meetings without reasonable cause." Our requested amendment should state, "The chairman on behalf of the commission may request the resignation of any member who has missed three meetings in 12 months without reasonable cause. If a requested member's resignation is not courteously tendered in a timely fashion, the chairman may present just cause, or, may present just cause to the commission and call for a vote of two-thirds of the full membership to terminate the member's term." Also, number four, "All members of the commission are expected to adhere to acceptable principles in matters of personal conduct and to exhibit a high degree of personal integrity at all times. Should a member not maintain the personal conduct, code of conduct, and thus jeopardize the integrity of this commission, the chairman may present just cause to the commission and call for a two-thirds vote of the full membership to terminate the member's term." Would like to ask Mr. Clausen to apparently, come on up.
Chuck Clausen, City Attorney here in Conway. I was, we've had some several discussions on other commissions as well about kinda formalizing a way to remove commissioners or members of other boards. Well, I really appreciate this committee considering that I would ask that you table the, this particular language and give me the ability to maybe draft something a little more comprehensive. I think that, that you're definitely on the right track. But I do think that maybe there should be a, the ability, we have to protect due process for all the committee members, all the commissioners. There needs to be a formalized process which it can be appealed, but also, I think, too, in this particular situation, because the committee doesn't appoint its own members, the council technically does, I think that maybe the vote to remove should be in the council's hands as well. Even if it is initially a vote of the commissioners to send an approval for removal, you know, to the, to the, to the council, maybe that ought to be the process. But if y'all could give me until the next meeting to maybe draft up a process for you to review and maybe consider at that time, we may protect ourselves in the long run.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or comments in the meantime?
Well, I just thought, recently called, what is that?
Yeah, there's, there's some vagueness to it and also some subjectivity. I mean, personal conduct, you know, what, what is to one is maybe not to another. Violation of that personal code.
Like misdemeanors versus felonies?
Or, you know, I mean. There, there could be.
Down on Oliver Street?
You know, there, there could be a lot of things that, obviously, we can come up with several examples or hypotheticals. But I think that what I can do, based on some other statutes and some other regulations, come up with a way to kinda define that conduct to make it a little less subjective.
And it'd be nice if, if the other commissioners were here too, because I mean, right now, we'd have to vote unanimously anyway, so I'm making a motion to table it.
Okay. Did you have anything else to say, Chuck?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt? I have a tendency to do that. Yeah.
All right, I have a motion by Brian and a second by Ray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Chuck.
All those opposed?
Thank you, sir.
No.
It is the notice and everything should, should suffice, so it's already been done. And since we had a public vote, I think moving it to the next meeting, if I'm wrong, I'll let you know when we're corrected.
Thank you. All right, well, before you go.
What happened?
We have one more item.
It's not on my sheet.
Yes, it is. It's the last page. Item E3, 2019 meeting and submission deadline schedule. The only question that I have would typically be for Beth, but she's not here, so maybe you can answer. Typically, in January and February, for the holidays, we schedule the meeting on the Tuesday following the holiday. And these two that are proposed in front of us are for the Wednesday. Any idea why? Thank you, Chuck. Okay. That's the first time that's happened in five years. Gotcha. Commissioners, are there any, I obviously wanna respect everybody's right to be able to go to any religious services that you may have. Does anybody feel like there will be any attendance issues and not be able to meet a Wednesday meeting for January and February?
My soup's getting cold.
Do we have to vote on this tonight? Table this as well till we get the full commission? Okay.
You're being no further business.
Wait, I have to have a motion to table? I have a motion by Arthur and a second by Ray. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I have a motion by Ann and a second by Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Weird jerk. Soup is getting cold.
I mean.
Where is it?
We got you too excited about the dinner.